This meeting with the Gloucester School Committee of Order. I'll remind everybody that the mission of Gloucester Public Schools is for all students to be successfully engaged lifelong learners. And I'll ask you to unmute. I plead with allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Oral communications, if there's anybody here that would like to address the school committee on any subject that's not on the agenda, this is your opportunity. Seeing none, we will move on to recognitions. Does anybody have any recognitions? Can't remember yesterday. I think you're going to hit on the agreement that got signed with Notch or...
Essex.
Agriculture and Technical.
And SA.
Yesterday. And the... So take that up. Anyone else? Anybody else who has any recognitions? Well, then we'll move right on to our Gloucester High School Student Advisory Council. We have two new members. Start by introducing yourself to the TV audience as well as everybody here. And then give us an update of what's going on at Gloucester High School.
Okay, I'll start off. My name is Elizabeth Schuster. I am the Executive President of Student Council. I'm on the Executive Board at the high school.
I'm Jemima Gro. I'm the Vice President of the Executive Board. So freshman elections just happened last week. President Zela Dor, Vice President Andrew Freelo, Secretary Piaro O'Connor, and Treasurer Kami Cooper all got elected. The class gift for 2018 has been ordered. It's an electric sign for the front of GHS. It was $9,800 donated by the class of 2018. And Student Council has a cleanup day on October 2nd focused on getting the front of the school all nicely tidied. And also, at the last meeting, we were told to come up with a proposal for our snack shop, and we were wondering if we could read it here.
Yeah, that would go to our subcommittee.
Well, what we had talked about is that we think it's a Dr. Sapphire thing.
Dr. Sapphire.
Dr. Sapphire.
Okay. If you have a proposal, give it to Dr. Sapphire.
Yes.
Well, you can read it. Go ahead.
Yeah, we'd like to hear.
So, the overview, the snack shop at Gloucester High School poses as a learning and fundraising opportunity for GHS seniors and future classes, of course. This shop generates essential finances for the current graduating class, which reduces the cost for all school events. But the snack shop also teaches students to manage finances, inventory, and staff while understanding and communicating with their customers. This money will be put towards events, which will lower ticket costs, ideally to create an affordable experience for all students. This income is an essential part of creating financially inclusive occasions. While the Student Council for the class of 19 recognizes the Gloucester Public School Board's concerns, we propose a compromise. For the 2018-2019 school year and potentially each year following, we propose that the snack shop be open for the following special occasions. October 1st to 5th is our Spirit Week and our Homecoming. On the 5th is our Homecoming game. Halloween, October 31st, the Day of Semi-formal, November 5th. Veterans Day, November 12th. It's Thanksgiving or Thanksgiving Eve, November 21st. That's a half-day. Cyber Monday, that can be negotiable.
I'll email you.
December 2nd, the start of Hanukkah. December 20th, the last full day of school before the winter break. January 2nd, the first day back. Midterms, so the 20th, 21st, the 22nd of January, and that's also the end of the second term. February 15th, that can also be negotiable. I'll switch that.
Excuse me, is that the day before the February vacation?
Put everything on the table and let them come back to us.
February 15th, day before break. March 7th, the Term Three progress reports. April 1st is April Fool's Day, the day before April vacation, April 12th. May 6th through 17th for AP testing, and May 31st, the seniors' last day. Thank you.
Thank you. We will take under advice of the Council.
Can you just quickly tell me how many days that is? I need to count them out. I'm just curious. Because I know some of them.
It's close to 30.
About 30 days out of the 180.
Excellent. Thank you.
Any questions? Seeing none, thank you very much. I tell this to everybody, you're welcome to stay. And technically, you are allowed to deliberate on if there's an issue that we're going to take up in the agenda that you feel you want to weigh in on. You can't vote, but you can be part of the conversation. So if there's anything, check the agendas and see if there's something that you'd like to voice and pin.
Thank you.
Okay?
For example, tonight, whether we're talking about audio use on buses, and that might be something.
Oh, mistaken.
No, it's not for the high school, but I mean, that's just an issue of elementary and...
Oh, mainly college.
Yeah, that might be something you want to weigh in on, kind of position.
We understand if you would.
But that should come today.
Yeah, we like to do that.
Presentations. Okay, moving on. We have the Consent Agenda.
I'd like to remove the Personnel Subcommittee of August 15th.
The minutes?
The minutes, yes.
Okay. Is there anything else that anybody would like to remove from the Personnel Subcommittee?
Remove the Consent Agenda.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, is there a correction or something?
Just a clarification. I think the minutes said something about, this is the meeting where they discuss this counseling position, administrative position. And it said the amount of money for salary, and then it said in no vacation, which I think probably it should have said no change to vacation. That's my understanding. So that should just be clarified.
Okay. You get that, Maria?
Yes.
Okay, so do we want to vote to accept the minutes of the Personnel Subcommittee of August 15th, 2018 as amended?
15th, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And then we'll go into deliberations on education and as well as the Superintendent's Report. And our first presentation is John Doyle is here, the Executive Director of Gloucester Biotechnology Academy, to give us an update on the Summer STEM and the Gloucester Biotechnology Academy program. Mr. Doyle, thank you for coming.
Thank you everyone for having me. I appreciate it. So my name is John Doyle, and I am the Education Director at Gloucester Biotechnology Academy. I just wanted to thank everyone. I've worked in close conjunction with many of the staff at Gloucester High School over the past, and the middle school, over the past two years. And we've had great support from the science staff and the people in the high school, science staff at the middle school as well. So I truly appreciate the people that you've put in charge of the students at Gloucester. It's been a pleasure, my pleasure, of working with them. So I'm going to tell you a little bit about Gloucester Biotechnology Academy. I like to start with this slide. So this is the panoramic of our lab, sitting right at the top of the hill here. I'd like for everybody to have a vision of the space, so that you can think about where we train the students while I'm speaking. And as you can see, basically, any time of day, it gets great light. We have seating for 20 students. In the last two classes this year and the past year, we filled the academy to capacity. And it's outfitted with the best equipment that you can get at the moment in terms of biotechnology. So if you haven't had the chance, I know many of you have come to see the space. If you haven't, I invite you to come and take a tour. I'd be happy to show you around. So what does the academy do? There's two basic programs that run at the academy. One is the Vocational Training Program, which I'll speak to you about mostly this evening, and also, as was mentioned, the Summer STEM Program. So the academy, the vocational program, what it purports is to train students to become entry-level technicians in biotech and life science labs. It's a nine-month, hands-on vocational training program. So the students spend roughly 80% of the time that they're with us at the academy in the lab actually doing real science. So they spend six months with us, basically at the bench up the street here. And we train them in all the technical skills and instrumentation that they would need in order to work in a functional lab. We also have a separate curriculum that trains them on career skills as well, which I'll get to. If they successfully complete both semesters, that first six months of the program, they're invited to partake in a paid internship with a local biotech company. And I'll show you a slide at the end. We have 12 local companies here on, either on the North Shore or Cambridge and Boston, who are our internship partners as of right now. We continue to add companies. I just spoke with a current company that we have right now this afternoon. They would like to increase the number of students that they take from us because they've been so successful. I have another company, a local Beverly company, coming tomorrow. They want to do the same, so we've enjoyed a lot of success in that run thus far. So I guess I hit the first three. So we have 20 students, as I said, right now, there's four, three full-time staff and one volunteer instructor. So we have five instructors, or five students per instructor, which gives us a lot of time to work with the students on an individual basis. We know all of our students well. We know their strengths and weaknesses when it comes time to sending them out into an internship. So that small class size is great. And we also invite, I don't know if any of you guys are interested or have any kind of background where you'd be interested in coming to speak to students, but we invite individuals from local businesses, whether they be HR folks or scientists, to come in and work with the students, especially in the career skills curriculum. So we emphasize a lot of things to them in class. I think it becomes white noise after a while, but when you hear scientists and you hear these HR individuals who stand in front of you, and they're the ones who are going to hire you into an internship, where they're going to take you on as an employee, and they start saying the same things we do, it kind of holds a little bit more weight. So some of the innovations in the curriculum, I spent a lot of time as a high school instructor before I went back to graduate school. I taught as a university-level professor for a number of years. And I always hated the question of why do we need to learn this? How does it fit into the big picture? I don't get it. So when we designed this curriculum, one of the things we took into account was making this into an authentic laboratory workflow. So they're doing work that you would see in an actual laboratory if they were doing DNA sequencing, which is one of the first things we teach them. If they're doing, you know, protein isolation for drug discovery, they would see this actual workflow in a lab. So it eliminates the question of why do I have to learn this? Why do we need to do this particular step? That is eliminated by using an authentic laboratory workflow. Each of the weeks builds on the previous week, so again, they don't have any question as to why they're doing the next step. We also repeat the skills that we teach them, so four out of the five days that they're there, they're doing the same SOP, the same procedures over and over again, so that they really learn and own the protocols that they're doing, the instrumentation, the techniques. So one of the things that we do is, if you're spending 80% of the time in the lab, we've taken the traditional academic model and flipped it on its head. We said, we're going to eliminate or try to reduce the amount of theoretical background that the students need and really emphasize the hands-on thing. So the way we get around that is we give them basically the minimum amount of theoretical background that they're going to need to know, so that the instruments or the techniques that they're doing that day is not a black box to them. So they should be able to explain everything they're doing. That's the goal. And we've had great success with that. We've had internship mentors and companies that hire our students come back and say, hey, your kids come into the lab and they hit the ground running when it comes to working at the bench. They don't have quite the theoretical background that a kid with a four-year college degree has, but we don't have to spend barely any time training them on the bench skills. So the career skills piece of it, we have a whole separate curriculum that focuses on things like teamwork in a lab, proper laboratory etiquette, resume and cover letter writing, mock interview skills, paperwork. So what kind of paperwork are you going to get when you get hired? Most of them don't know what an I-9 or a W-4 even is. We give them samples of a nondisclosure agreement, non-compete clauses. We teach them how to fill all that out. What's your social media profile look like? You know, hopefully you're not on there drinking and doing whatever, and people are going to search you and they're going to see this. We teach them what LinkedIn is. If they don't have a LinkedIn profile, we help them make one. So we try to make them as well-rounded as we possibly can when they come out. It's basically a whole session on life skills for them. And then we continuously improve upon this curriculum based on the feedback that we get from our internship mentors. So we send out surveys, we visit them in the field, and we say, hey, what were the things that they were particularly strong with? What were the things they needed improvement with? And, you know, the areas where they needed improvement, we try to augment the curriculum. So I don't expect anyone to know what any of this means. Basically, what this is showing is that each week in the curriculum builds on the week prior. So everything that they're doing is a sequential workflow. They have a starting material basically, and they have an end goal that they have to reach. So as I said, it eliminates that question of why are we doing this? So that's the DNA curriculum in Semester 1. This is the protein curriculum in Semester 2, and it's essentially showing the same thing. So this is what a typical week at the academy looks like. Monday through Thursday, in the mornings, we spend about an hour on the theoretical background, so they know what they're doing heading into the labs. We spend anywhere from three to four hours doing the experiments each day. We try to give them anywhere from a half an hour to about an hour for lunch. And then in the afternoon, they come back, they work on things, they practice lab math, how to make solutions in a lab. We look at data, there's a ton of data. They have to learn how to work with really complex data sets, which a lot of them don't know how to do. A lot of them come in, they don't know how to graph in Excel. They don't know how to write functions in Excel, so we teach them all that stuff. And then notebooks. So I brought a couple of samples of student work that I'd like to pass around. This is a native son of Gloucester, some of you may know him. And this gentleman, not a native son of Gloucester, but you can see, we teach them how to keep a legal lab notebook. So if they were going to court to fight for intellectual property rights, this is the way a legal lab notebook would be kept. Every page is dated and signed. You know, they have to write out the procedures, the materials that they need, their results and discussion. So all of that is kept in a notebook. Friday's a little different. We have competency assessments at the academy, so we don't do multiple choice tests in Essex. We basically say, you've worked on, you know, a pH meter all week. So we push it in front of them and say, all right, show me all the steps on how to run a pH meter. And we have a checklist. And if they hit all the points, they pass. And if they don't hit all the points, they're not proficient yet. And we coach them up, they have to come back and do it again until they show us that they're proficient. So that is, you know, most labs aren't going to ask you what you got on your report card. They don't care. All they care about is you know how to run the equipment, you know how to do the particular skills, and that's the way we test them. All the students are responsible for doing two data presentations, so each week they come up, they have to be able to talk about the data that they gathered that week, whether it be graphical or however they have their results. That helps them practice scientific rhetoric. It allows them to start to make arguments and use the data to back up arguments. And, you know, in a lab, you have sessions like this. You sit around in a room, and your PIs ask you what you do for the week, and you have to show them your data, and you have to be able to argue why you think your data is either right or wrong. And we get them used to that. They hate us for it when they're there, but it's one of the things they come back and say, thank you so much for doing that for us, because it really got us ready. And then the career skills piece is usually Friday afternoon. So we have speakers come in, and we train them on, you know, the particular skills that I talked about before. So this is a typical academic calendar. There's 11 weeks per semester. They're there 8:30 to 2:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. We try to get them out by 2:00 p.m. every day. Most of them work a part-time job, and we try to be cognizant of that, having them do that in the afternoons. Internship, as I said, if you pass this successfully, you go to a 12-week paid internship. They're all guaranteed to have a paid internship if they successfully pass. And the hours, the reason I put the hours there is to give you a little bit of context. We have just over 1,000 hours of contact time at the academy for these students at the bench. And the way that relates, in a four-year college, you have about, you know, back of the envelope calculation, it's about 1,000 hours of lab time if you're a science major. We're doing that in roughly nine months. Again, it's lighter in theory, but it's really heavy on the hands-on, practical application. So it's equivalent to what a four-year bachelor's degree has in science, and it's about 200 to 250 hours more than the closest associate's degree, so community college, with an internship. So we're about 200 to 300 hours more than that, just so you have some background. So these are the internship companies who currently support our students. Some of them you may recognize. Dan Farmer's quite well-known. MIT's quite well-known, doing the bio labs, cell signaling in the area. But we have a lot of smaller startup companies who also take our students, so they have the chance to either work here on the North Shore, or they can go into Cambridge and Boston if that's what they choose to do. So this list has doubled since last year. We had six companies to start, we now have 12. And as I said, we continue to add companies as time's gone on. So here's the results. These are the first two classes that have come through. The first classes, we had 34 students between those two classes enrolled at the academy. 11 of them have been hired into full-time positions as entry-level technicians. Eight of them have gone on to a four-year college degree in science, not in anything other than a science degree. Four are still working in extended internships, so they picked up an internship and they've been working it throughout the summer and into the fall. Three are still pursuing employment. Six did not graduate from the academy, and two graduated but have decided that biotech wasn't for them. So those are our numbers. Pretty proud of those numbers. I think, you know, if I were a baseball player, I might go to the Hall of Fame. But yeah, we've done quite well. It's, you know, it's a passion of mine to see these students come basically from nothing and then wind up with a job. They're making more money than they've ever made. All of a sudden, they have full benefits. They have the chance to go back to school. A lot of the students who are first class have been working for a year and now choosing to go back to school at night. So it's a really cool thing to be a part of. I'm really proud of that. So the last bit, and then I'll let you guys ask some questions. The Summer STEM Program, this was our inaugural year. And the purpose of this is to have middle school and high school students come into our lab and do real hands-on lab work and inspire them to have a love and a passion for science like all of the instructors do. So the first program we ran this summer was fish frog forensics. So being Gloucester natives, you guys all probably know what fish frog is. So what we did was, the students took on the role of forensic scientists, and we had a mock restaurant in Boston. And we, you know, we had this whole story around it that the, there was a sort of a person on the inside who said, they're selling, they're saying they're selling cod, but it's not really cod, it's haddock, and they're ripping off their customers. And so there was a Boston Globe reporter that got wind of it and brought samples from the restaurant to our lab. And you as forensic scientists have to figure out, you know, whether the restaurant is committing fish frog or not. So we got them samples of white fish and gave them all samples of white fish, and they had to use the biotech skills and the instrumentation in the lab that we were showing them to decide what species of fish they had. So we had students 18, anywhere from 13 to 18, so seventh graders all the way through 11th graders. And to give you guys some background, what we were doing was biology that you don't usually see until you're a junior, senior in college, or, you know, first year graduate school. We had seventh graders, 12 and 13 years old, doing this, which was really cool to see. So we ran an April pilot, just to see if it worked. We had 16 students from four area schools. It was Gloucester, Rockport, Hamilton, Wyndham, and Essex Tech. And then once we found that this really worked well, we ran three summer sessions, July 9, 23, and August 6. We had 33 students attend that from 20 schools from around the country, internationally, New York, Minnesota, Virginia, and Nicaragua, which was really awesome. And the idea is to start new programs each year. So the students who took fish frog this year, you know, we'll offer something else for them next year, and hopefully that there'll be some sort of prerequisite, maybe they'll have to take both in order to keep going. So we have a whole lot of ideas on how we want to progress with that, but that's it. I think I stepped in my time limit. Roughly in there. So anyway, this was last year's class that graduated. So you guys, some of you guys may know Joe Rosa. He's quite involved with Gloucester Ed Foundation. He's one of our, he's our volunteer instructor, and I think if you don't know anything about him, he's a former head of Biogen Protein Chemistry Department. So I don't think the students quite understand who he is when he stands up in front of them and helps them teach, teaches them protein chemistry. But eventually, they figure it out. So any questions you guys have?
Doyle?
Is that typical distribution of male to female?
It's not. So this particular class only had two females in it. We have six females in the class this year. So that was one of our goals from last year, was to increase the number of female students that we had. The first year was five, and we continue to try to bring in more women into science. That's one of our, one of our goals that we try to stick to. Yeah, that's a good question.
Any questions?
I have a question. What is your outreach to get people in the community interested? Is it just Gloucester community, or Rockport, Essex being interested?
Yeah, so we basically do information sessions in what we call the Greater Camden Region. So Rockport, Gloucester, Manchester, Essex, Hamilton, Wyndham, Ipswich, Beverly. Yeah, so, and we basically go into the schools, we talk to guidance, we talk to their science teachers. We have them help us identify students that they think would be a good fit for the program. We do the College and Career Nights in the area. We have a whole sort of marketing campaign that, you know, promotes the academy, promotes the Summer STEM programs. But a lot of it is just that grassroots, getting into the building, sitting down with a group of students and talking to them about, you know, what's your plans for next year? Have you thought about this particular approach? You know, it's short, it's relatively inexpensive, you know, and we're getting, you know, students are getting hired, they're going back to college. It's particularly interesting with students from, you know, sort of the Hamilton, Wyndham, or we have students from Clark School, the private schools. They see this as a gap year, and they want to try it. They're really interested in science, they want to see if this is what they like. So we have sort of that angle that a lot of students take.
And you said your class hall's 20?
20.
Do you get more than 20 applicants?
Typically, yeah. Not too many, like 25.
So how do you decide?
So the application process, they have to fill out a general application form, who you are, where you're from. High school and college transcripts, if they've gone to school beyond high school. A 300 to 500-word personal statement about why they think they'd be a good fit at the academy. What else? An interview with myself, and two letters of recommendation. And then it's, you know, during the interview, we follow up with their references. But a lot of it is, you know, we look for that student who's on the edge of their seat, they can't wait to get in that lab, they want to, you know, work with their hands. That's the kind of thing that we look for. You know, we have some who just kind of sit back in the seat and kind of get the sense that maybe mom or dad pushed them into it. But, you know, that's sort of intangible of, they're on the edge of their seat, they can't wait to do it, you know, smile from ear to ear. That's the kind of thing I look for.
Thank you. I have a great question. What's the distribution of age of your students?
So at the academy, it's 18 to 26. And we have, and it's interesting because we found that even with the younger ones, it doesn't matter, you know, that they've just gotten out of high school. Some of them, I mean, I don't know, I don't know if you guys know Sarah Corchado, she graduated Gloucester High School last year. She was 18, she was the youngest one in this group. There were people in this group that were 29, and she was by far, hands down, the leader of this group. She took control of this class. She set out, you know, the schedules of what they were doing. She set out, you know, the schedules of what they were doing, when they were going to do it. You know, and she's now, she got hired full-time at MIT's Broad Institute. Right out, she was in Gloucester High School last year, she was walking around the hall. And now she's at the Broad as a research assistant, which is, I couldn't have.
Are these especially intelligent students in a way? That they're more than your average student, even though the average student has taken these particular classes in high school to prepare them for this? Are these students higher IP students or anything like that?
I think it's a range. I think you get, you know, sort of your middle-of-the-road to higher achieving. Yeah, it's not.
You don't look at them, how hard they work at it?
Yeah. I often tell them the theory, and they'll know the theory and the technical skills in their sleep by the time they get out of here. Really, it comes down to career skills. How well-organized they are, how well they manage their time. Those are the things that set the ones who really get well apart. But yeah, in terms of achievement, there, you know, there's a range. They're not any more exceptional than any other high school. I would say it's, you know, Captain Belker.
So after they graduate, you guys seem like you're following up with them. How many years are you following up with them, going to see them, how they're tracking?
So right now, we've done two. We hope to have someone that we can hire to continue to follow up with them because obviously, as you said, 20 keeps coming through. I don't, you know, we don't have the time to keep following up with them. But we followed up with both, the first two cohorts that have gone through and kept track of what they're doing. But yeah, it's gonna, we're gonna need somebody else to help with that eventually. It's getting, it gets overwhelming.
Jones is an amazing opportunity for anybody, but particularly for the students in Gloucester. How can we help you reach them? Well, kind of starting the interest maybe of junior year or senior year, and then even for those students who have left high school and maybe went to school for one year, but don't quite know if they want to continue, or maybe they're gonna, you know, kind of take time off then. Or even if they're 22 and still got out of college and don't, you know, majored in something that wasn't, you know, they can't get employed.
So your second two points there are really valid, because I consider them sort of the Holy Grail, if you will. The students who graduated high school and then just sort of, you can go into anything. They never went to school, they've been kind of working job to job. If we can get them, typically, they're a little older, and they understand that a high school diploma's not going to take them as far as they want to go. I think just spreading the word as much as we can, get into the schools, keep talking to, you know, the students at a younger age. I mean, we're trying with the summer STEM to get them in their ninth, 10th grade, so they're aware of the Academy and the opportunities. But yeah, as a school committee, if you can talk to the parents, get it in. A lot of them, they come because their parents showed them an article, or, "Hey, it was on Good Morning Gloucester, did you read this?" If you get the parents behind it, a lot of them will start pushing the students into the program. But yeah, the Holy Grail was that kid that graduated the high school and didn't go anywhere. And they have that experience, they have the work experience. A lot of them go into like the restaurant business around here. And they're really good, they're culinary, they know how to follow a recipe, they're good at time management, they're good under pressure. They do really well. So if I could find them, I don't know how to find, what do I walk around with a sign on that says, "Hey, check out the Academy, where are they?" You know, so we use a lot of word of mouth. We use the students, we use the parents. But yeah, getting into the schools, getting the parents behind it is really helpful.
Sure. What's the tuition?
So tuition, we just started, the first two cohorts were free that went through. This year, we started charging tuition. It was $9,000 for the year. But we provided tremendous amount of financial aid to the students who came this year. I think all but one, all but one received some sort of financial aid to attend the program. So yeah, that's the short answer.
So you're doing a lot of DNA sequencing on cod?
Yeah.
Now, there's, the way the regulators break it down is they break it down by areas by saying those are different groups of fish.
Yeah.
Have you been asked to do anything like with Georgia's bank cod, an inshore cod, and see if they have the same DNA to possibly disprove some of these theories that they have?
The Academy has not. The Academy is proof of concept. It's show the students how all of this works, so that it's not a black box. The institute side, they are working on looking at different cod populations using sequencing currently. So there's, they have a published paper that, I don't know that even off the top of my head, but they've worked on that particular question. That's something they hope to provide better science for research going forward. The Academy does not do that. The Academy is simply for education, shows students how all this stuff works.
And if I can suggest the next fish fraud?
I'm having all kinds of ideas.
Could be with the new promotion that the mayor's pushing forward on Massachusetts and Gloucester lobster, the main important Massachusetts lobster. So Gloucester lobster compared to Lancaster. And the restaurant's cheating by importing costume meat.
Yeah, yeah. Bad idea.
Do we have to tell by looking at, like, they would be different?
No, they just look at the beak.
They look at the tail, yeah.
That's why, yeah, that's why we use whitefish, because it's hard to tell.
Yeah, if you shock it, they wouldn't be able to tell.
Any other questions?
I have a statement. Once in a while, look this way, I do come once in a while. First of all, thank you. For those who haven't been to the institutes, I recommend to talk to them and take a tour. It's amazing what they're going to be doing. We're very lucky to have the Academy and to have the institution here in Gloucester. You have no idea. We already talked about that, Tony. There was Bruce Tar, myself, Senator Tar, and we asked, how can we also integrate some of the fishermen to do some of the testing at the institute? And how can we get the students eventually to come over and to teach the fishermen? Because it's about the science and no one's believing, but, and how we can get some funding. Some of the students, I've been following myself who've gone there, and I gave recommendations, and some of the students, we have teachers, their son went there. And not only did he get a, because, you know, he wanted to know the coast got so bad, and sometimes you just can't get there. He graduated from the Academy, and some of the, when he did the internship, there was other people that come in and really were so impressed with him. Said, "I know you want to do lab and do this, but why don't you stop my company at $58,000?" He bought himself a first Jeep for traveling all around. And is doing great. And some of the students, and which, you know, and there's also all different kinds of bilingual students too. It's not just, they're all white school. It's great, it's fabulous, because these are students that really are in between. I really don't know if I can get the financial aid or whatever help. I don't know if I can, and afraid to go to a college because they're not sure what they want yet, and they do some courses here. Some of the students that were there are now so impressed with what they learned at the Academy and are taking biology in it, like you're right. They're actually ahead of some of the kids who just started in the college and are sophomores and juniors, and they just went in as freshmen. So it's a, you know what, we're very lucky in Gloucester. Between the vote, between our teachers to the partnership we just have in this, it's like, it's amazing what we're doing here for our students. So one student or another shouldn't get lost, do not be able to not do something. Whether it's blue collar, working with your hands with the unions, whether it's going off to college because our teachers are great and they're getting them prepped, and as far as intellectual, ma'am, I don't know who she was or who she is, but all our children are smart and intelligent. We have great teachers doing that, so, and that's pushing it forward. So, you know, it's great, but I really do, I asked the questions about the lobsters, and it was just so amazing. I was just like, I kept, as you know, interrupt all the time when we're saying how the sea urchin, which is my favorite thing in the world, and the lobster don't get cancer. Because we're not only looking at the DNA or the DNA where the fish is going, but there is a plant out there that is stronger than morphine, but it's not addictive. And so if they can get that DNA, because you need like hundreds of thousands of tons with the DNA they get, to try to reproduce it, which is amazing. Why doesn't the lobster get cancer, like some fishes do? And why doesn't sea urchin? You know what's happening now with the seals and all of that? It's so amazing, so thank you very much. I missed the beginning, but it doesn't matter, because everybody wants it.
Thank you. Thank you, Troy.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, very, thank you. If any of you guys have wanted, I love cards and some more of the informational files. I don't know if anybody got one.
One last question.
Yeah.
The kids, students graduate from, first of all, they should have a name and. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry about the.
Well, actually, this is a school committee meeting. You're really not allowed to ask questions.
Oh, my God, okay, I'm sorry. I was just curious.
You can go talk to most of them.
Okay, that's all right. Stay tuned.
Thanks, Eric, for having me, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, you're welcome. And if anybody, like I said, if anybody wants to come see the Academy, please stop by.
We will move on to our next item, which is a continued conversation regarding audio recording on school buses. Our new school buses are equipped with cameras and also they have audio equipment built into them. And there was a discussion last, two weeks ago, and I was not here. So I will just hand this over to the superintendent.
Briefly, as everyone knows, the school committee approved the video recording for security purposes on buses, but both for question of audio open. The presentation included the pros and the cons. I had mentioned at the last meeting that I would take it up with the leadership team as well. We had a meeting the next day. And I thought that it would be informative that the folks who were in the trenches, so to speak, and dealing with challenging behaviors and what have you, that we should hear from them. What I heard at our leadership team meeting was in no way monolithic, that there were different points of view. But I thought that the school committee might benefit from hearing from those folks once they're really involved in addressing those behaviors.
Okay, sounds great. There you are. All the school principals here, and I think.
In my last district, we had cameras on just a couple buses to start, because the cost was prohibitive to doing them all. So we started with buses that had a longer distance. One in particular that had a monitor as well. And what we found was that it really, it was a deterrent for misbehavior for one. But more importantly, what it ended up doing was giving us a way to very quickly get to the truth of what was happening. So we did have video and audio. And there were situations, primarily bullying kinds of things, or accusations of bullying, where we could really quickly get to the bottom of investigations that would otherwise have taken us, you know, hours or days, and often gotten to a point where we couldn't really prove what was the actual truth. I did find that the few times that I used the camera tapes, we didn't have access to the whole thing. I would let transportation know about what time something happened, and then they would give me the excerpt that I would go through and find what I needed to find. But the audio was essential for it, because you couldn't really, you know, in those situations, it's really what kids are saying to one another. A lot of times, it's scenarios where one kid says something, another kid says something out, and it escalates to a point where the first thing might have been sort of a joke, but then, as it builds, it becomes hurtful. So it did allow us to really see what was happening. There were situations where kids felt maybe they weren't treated fairly by the monitor, and that was also very easy to get to the bottom of. We could see what the child had done and how the monitor addressed it. We could do coaching if we need to for the adult. We could also, you know, show the kid what happened and talk them through the incident. There were a couple times when I invited parents to watch what had happened, just to sort of clarify the event. As we know, there's one side of a story, and there's another side of a story, and the truth is usually somewhere in the middle. So all of those things we found really helpful in situations. And it helps not only get to the bottom of discipline, but it also helped us be able to support the kid that was acting up and to help them, and have them watch themselves. Sometimes it was helpful to say, "Okay, this is how I handled it." Those conversations we often have with processing, where we want kids to think through what they did and what they could have done differently, where they could see where they were going up what I call the conflict escalator. They would learn, they could give examples of how they could come down instead. So video was great, but if we hadn't been able to hear what they were saying, then I don't know that we wouldn't have been able to really discern what was happening. Because you could hear tone as well as the words itself. And that often makes a difference in most situations. I know I walked in, so hopefully I spoke to it.
Hey, do a great job.
Black and easier.
I have nothing to say. The, these buses are equipped with both cameras and audio recording. Could you just go, I've heard a little bit about this, and I don't know whether you presented this, what, how it would actually work?
Right.
Rants. Oh, okay.
So specifically, what were you talking about, the recording methods?
Do you think that you guys are going to be, are they going to be on the whole time the bus is running?
So.
Put it on and off, who would look at the?
Okay, so we can kind of run that down. So the camera systems are basically tied to the bus's battery. So when your ignition is turned on, the camera starts recording. So the entire time that the bus is operational. There are specific settings within the bus camera system that you can say, "Oh, 20 minutes, half an hour, 45 minutes after the bus has been turned off, it's still going to continue to record." That way, you capture an incident, either unloading or unloading, the scenes from the bus. But that's a decision that possibly you'll have to set, what meets the best needs. One of the examples that I was given when I was talking to the company about the configuration was buses that go out and do charges for sports. A lot of times, they're sitting there for half an hour, while the kids are getting the equipment on and off the bus. It makes sense to, that's usually when an incident will happen, so they'll leave it turned on for that period of time. Or, you know, you can't have buses island as well, so they turn them off, set the cover. If it's cold, they turn it back on till it stops recording. This all comes down to a process of whatever you feel comfortable we can set those settings for. Same with the audio. The audio settings of the bus can be enabled to turn it off on the bus. It's whatever your decisions come up to. I'm just leaving them there, I'll turn it on and off as you will. The camera systems are only accessible from the bus themselves. They're not remote, I can't sit there in my office and view them. Transportation Director can't look at them. Somebody physically has to go to the device, unlock the case, open it, and connect to the device directly, and put in a secure password to access the drives. So it's, even if someone broke into the bus, ripped it apart, we still have to get it to be drive, which is locked and secured. So it's going to be a case-by-case basis. So if there's an incident, contact someone from MIT. We show up with our laptops, plug in, pull the information on, and we'll disseminate as we normally do with any other footage.
How long does it still run?
Based on the options that I received from the manufacturer, we have at least a 350-gig hard drive, which we should be able to record at least four to five weeks of non-stop footage. Probably a little more, since you shut the bus off, it's not running continuously, so that should help. And buses that may have heavier rides or longer usage, we may have to look at maybe swap the drive out, I don't know. It depends on the quality that's set and the length of the time. Also, audio will add additional storage requirements, but it's a new era for us if we've ever recorded audio, so I don't know what it's going to do. Yes?
I think I just did say this, I maybe didn't say it. What is the control from the bus driver? The bus driver can shut it on and off?
No, so the bus driver has, all they control they have is the key. They turn the bus on, and then it starts recording. There's supposedly some other components on the button that could push to micro incident, but they have no control over the camera itself, none.
And they have no control over the audio?
Nope, none. They can't play it back, they can't look at it. All they can do is inform the transportation director or principal that there's an issue with the bus, and then you have to go and interact with the camera system.
The only other thing they can do is that if, it's just like your car, if your tire's low and a little sign comes on, they could identify that a sign came on, and they would contact the information technology, who in turn would exclusively be the ones that would do any repairs, access or?
There are a few indicator lights that are on the device that will say there's a problem in the system, or there's a low storage. There are some warnings of events that they can see. Protocols will be contact someone from MIT, or transportation director will get someone over to take a look at it, so, yeah.
So just so I'm clear, what is the arbitrary setting of how long it runs after the ignition's turned off that we can set for half an hour?
I believe it's up to 190 minutes? 199 minutes. Jeep is up nine minutes.
But now we'd be able to run and see that when the buses were being cleared, that they were being checked to by the bus driver?
Or the, yes. So during the set time.
That's negotiations.
That's make you a good thing.
Okay.
Is there going to be a routine where you want the buses to see if there is issues with the devices?
I mean, we're. I mean, we're...
Depending on the driver to recording?
Well, I mean, we can do, we can all certainly set up a spot check or set up some type of routine. It's just like a free checklist. When you get on the bus, before they get on, they check, make the signals of it, the doors, the lights work. This would just be another one more thing to look, we turn it on to look at the operation of the vehicle. If there's any issues, then IT can now flood it, just like putting it together for anything, we'll come right over and take a look at it.
I'd like to just ask the principal, in general, when you have to deal with problems that arise on the bus, how often are they actual physical fights, or are they more bullying and verbal?
It's often... It's the verbal. I would say at least 90% of the time it's the verbal.
So the audio recording would be immensely helpful?
Yes.
And as Lynn said, the tone, when you say those things, is critical, because a student
can say something, and they're going to tell me that they were joking, right? But if I can hear the tone in which it was said, and the reaction from the other students around them, if other students were encouraging them, or standing up for their child, or anything like that, if there's really important information out. Otherwise, it's one child said one thing, another child said another, anywhere kind of stuff, in the middle.
It takes a lot of time, our time, to try to figure out what he said, she said, what really happened. And I know with the new buses, we had an incident last week. The bus driver was saying that they really couldn't see over the seats, so they didn't see what happened, but a child did get injured on the bus, and it was from another child, a physical aggression. So having a video and audio would have helped out a lot.
Excuse me, but you said that she couldn't see over, so how would they audio, so how does she know who's talking?
I don't want to go into the details, but she knew when something had happened.
So the audio was already on?
No, no, no audio, no data.
She heard an altercation coming across the time?
A child got pushed out of the seat, landed on their head, the head split open, the child was bleeding. The other kids were yelling, he's bleeding, he's bleeding, or she's bleeding, whatever, you know? And that's when she stopped the bus, pulled over to find out. But when I spoke to her, my concern was she was saying she couldn't see over the new bus seats. So therefore, that's a concern for me. If they can't see over the bus seats, then we need some kind of video to see what's happening. And audio would also help me in this case, because you're having a he said, she said, oh, this one pushed me first, I pushed back.
So there are, as I understand, that there are two cameras on the buses, one going forward and one going back?
There are two cameras there, extreme wide angle lenses, and their mounts is offset from each other above the midpoint of the bus, one facing slightly forward, one facing slightly back. That way, you don't, not only do you see front and the back of the bus, but you have to look down into the seats, because they're higher. So you'll actually be able to see what's happening.
Definitely see that scene.
As opposed to just looking and just seeing a public head.
Because I mean, the bus drivers trying to...
You might know, right?
And ride safely.
There's no way you can have a live picture of people looking at that or looking at the road. I mean, it's more post-incident analysis and review, but...
It's also a strong deterrent. In a previous district that I worked in, we had the ability as well. It's not a lot of fun to go through hours of video to look at that. So just a comment to a child that I hear there's an issue, I can go back and check, is this something we can fix now, or do I need to spend a whole lot of time researching it? Because our conversation may be different after I sit there for two hours looking for it. Nine times out of 10, the behavior stopped. So it's a nice deterrent if they know that, you know, we can check up on. Are the buses equipped signs to say that they're being video recorded?
That will be adequate, that is obligatory, as we mentioned at the last meeting. We would also be placing it in the student handbook. The video, I don't know what the fate of the audio is, but it would be the same if it were to happen. And we will also be sending a letter home to parents as well.
Are we doing like kid language, like we can hear you, as opposed to audio recordings to a secondary, you know what I mean, something that kids are not smart, you know what I mean? You know, anything like that? If they decide to go that way, I would hope that does.
At the elementary level, we would also have a school meeting to talk about what this means, and the impact, and their responsibility. So we would go out of our way to make sure they were fully aware.
That would be practical for the day, if I go out and do it yourself.
Glad they didn't have them on the virus, going over and going. My teacher told us, that's what we should, share the whole game at our school.
I just have a comment. I like the kind of role-playing, the fact that this can help coach how they handle situations generally, because once somebody's in trouble, if you don't have a way to kind of make it a positive learning experience, you know, they might misremember, or they may be shutting down as to what actually happened, but you could say, well, maybe you might have had better words at this point, or whatever the case may be. I think that would be the most positive thing to commend us, is that kids can reflect on.
I mean, even more minor misbehavior, when we have winter time, and they're stocking caps and mittens, all of a sudden it becomes, we're throwing these things around the bus, and everybody's standing up. Just to know that we have eyes and ears, they would know that we know if they're behaving with the bus or not, and so that keeps it safer for everybody.
Can we read that to you for?
So will this come back to programs? Do we...
It's a little bit in the school committee. I want these folks to provide more information.
The program's also recommended both audio and visual kind of recording.
So if the committee's got a rush of votes tonight, just what you've got, like you're saying, ask them, have we used our ability to survey parents to ask them if they'd be comfortable in favor of mutual on this before we start? I'm not asking about whether we have the permission writing to audio record their children, which is what I was going to do. Nevertheless, it's their children, it's a big change. You know, I have parents, it's totally a certain big brother nonsense, but I could be the minority if I heard from, you know, a parental survey that most people liked it and thought it could be safer. I'd be more inclined to put my personal, you know, aside and support them like this. I think we should hear from the parents who's doing the affected audio, if we put it forward.
We need to know, you know, most of the...
This has a history of video recording, building, and other things like that. Arsenal has it, I think most parents have it. And I mean, in the eyes of law, video recording, audio recording are very different. Audio is one you need permission to do, et cetera, et cetera. You need to do it to permit anybody doing, to record a conversation with somebody to be aware of it, except for certain counts. A law recommends that recording audio is a different beast than recording video of someone. And so again, it should be appropriate for us, at least ask the parents for an opinion. We can choose to go against the little parents, if it comes back the way the committee doesn't like, or maybe find out there's, perhaps a support for this, if it makes it a lot easier to have to say this is why we voted, why we voted.
Can I ask a question? Of those who've been in a district with this before, what's your reaction, the parents were when...
So it was in the district when I, I mean, I wasn't in the district when it was implemented, so it was already there, and they never really questioned it at all. And the parents that I spoke to actually appreciated it, because it often helped clarify situations that happened on the bus, and made them feel comfortable that we were watching and able to address those issues that otherwise would have been missed, because we didn't hear what was happening. So I think it gave them a level of security in my last district.
I would second that. Parents were in favor of it, because there were instances on the bus, you know, middle school, that's that, he said, she said, she said, she said, stuff going on, and, you know, parents assumed it would be helpful to, as a deterrent, and also for us to be able to go figure out who started what, and who was harassing who, if that were the case, and that kind of thing, so.
I never thought I'd say this, because every time one says that I cringe sometimes, I don't want to say it. School treaties elected to make decisions. I don't see this. I'm usually one that wants to hear from everybody before I make a decision, but in this situation, I think it's become the norm that we are audio and videotaping. I think we'll follow the law and have signs up. I don't see this as a big issue, and if it is, I would hope that parents come forward, and then maybe we can make changes. But last week, I attended, two weeks ago, I attended a meeting at the tech, and I, we interviewed kids, as to why did they go to the school and not stay in their hometowns, and the number one reason was bullying, and their message was very strong, that words often hurt more than the physical touch. And I heard that, and this conversation, this topic was the first thing that came to my mind, so I loved that meeting, saying, you know, when this comes on the agenda again, and I didn't realize it was going to be so quick, I thought we'd have more time with it, I was definitely going to support the audio piece, but just for that reason. So I'm going to encourage that we put the motion forward tonight, make a decision, and if we get a bad reaction, we can always come back and change. I don't see it as a different topic, that we're going against parental rights. Which I do believe in.
So as a follow-up, let's just mention this is the norm. Do we have any data whether neighboring school districts are doing this? How many of us have the, you know, short, that again, helps if this goes through?
We have it in front of us, and it doesn't matter.
Well, I have a handful that I can, I don't know about neighboring, Lincoln, they disabled the audio feature, as they believe that recording those conversations violates the Massachusetts law on two-party consent. I don't know if that's true. Ron Dustable had this question last year. If you add audio, you must make sure every parent and every student over 18 signs a consent form, that they know there's audio recording as it falls under wiretapping. Penn Tucket, the superintendent parent just came from North Carolina, and for the past eight years, they have both video and audio. Shrewsbury has video and audio as well. Okay, and North Hampton does. I had sent the sound on the superintendent's link, and those are the responses that I got.
But do we have the numbers? And handling?
Try.
Try, the cooperating, try as well.
And we don't know how many districts don't have the ability, not that they chose not to, they just don't have the new buses.
No idea. I sent out for those who have, I don't remember what I wrote exactly, those who have the equipment are using both the video and the audio components. And I got about five or six responses.
So if we were to approve audio recording this evening, what would the process be for implementation of that?
I know that installation is still pending. Notification, as I think we've already sort of described, notification would have to go home from central office. Signage would have to be set up on the buses, these two handbooks themselves would have to be amended, and the principals, as they have already indicated, would be explaining to the students what the roles and responsibilities were of both the security cameras, the audio, and their responsibility on the bus as well.
So if a parent gives to sign it, because we're not talking about anybody who's over 18, would they be so told, well, you can't write the bus?
We've been advised by our attorney that signatures, consent forms, and that kind of signs is not required in the law.
Just post it.
No, it's just...
Signs on the bus. You'd probably pick a date to the future, so that all this happens prior to...
Maybe after, let's say the installation was done today, maybe after Thanksgiving. Get people ample time, and as has been suggested, if there is any blowback, we'd want to hear from that as well.
Can I make my motion to include audio as a capability in our bus?
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, so, for the sake of, so we, get this out, because really, parents do need to know. So if we say yes today, you can go forward, so probably won't happen until November?
It's ob, we can set it for November, we can set it for January.
Because this way, each council in here, each school committee person, each principal, we get up and do the outreach. In the meantime, you know, once this goes out, we'll get feedback.
Yeah.
We'll get, I'm just going to put it on Facebook and ask them, do you, don't you not? And you'll know we'll get feedback. So we'll have it out in the next school committee, hopefully. You'll, hopefully, we'll, because I know how it is when I do write to mayors, and you ask for what they can use. Sometimes either it's like trickling, and then all of a sudden you get bombarded, so obviously someone might be, you know, sending that. I also ask the questions too, of, you know, what are we doing in school? People want it in school. I mean, I'm telling you honestly, I have the mayor's meeting all the month, and we're all talking about, how far do we go as far as, you know, filming our kids? Do we want them live? There's so many concerns and scares. And don't forget too, that, you know, we've had incidents that these children who started on the bus brought it into the classrooms too. And so hopefully that some of these things can be prevented and won't go on to, because they'll know and they'll believe the bus driver, because sometimes, I'm sorry, some of the parents says, well, she's not getting it right, and that bus driver don't like my child. And then the poor bus driver's getting stuck, because I've been there when I've heard it all. And so I have no problem with the video. The audio, some people are a bit upset, because we're having, you know, audio at the city hall, we're posting everywhere. I mean, you know, some people, so that gives us an opportunity to reach out, so.
There's no rush, we have the status quo, what we're used to. Give the community enough opportunity.
But can you stop with the video sooner, or can...
We could.
I mean, if we stop, we can stop with the video sooner, and then we can wait until November, whatever, we get our, until the next school committee meeting, maybe we'll get more answers by then, and then do the audio with that. I mean, I have no problem with that either.
Well, so again, based on just that, I understand why we have to vote on this tonight. We have the capacity to email parents and send them a link, say, you know, one or two questions survey. So if I'm going to repeat it, there's no rush on this, video being implemented sooner than audio, why are we so averse to just checking with the community before we get this vote?
Well, I think essentially, we need to put the program, get it rolling, so that this stuff is getting set up to be done. I wouldn't be opposed to bringing it back after we, you know, announcements are going to go out to parents, you're going to be telling on students, and that would serve as the test for the community, and we can always, if there's a reaction, we, before it's actually clicked on, we can bring it back and revote it.
Shouldn't the announcement say though, that the school committee has voted?
Yeah.
If this is going to happen, I mean, so if the announcement's going to go out the next couple of weeks, you want to vote on it today?
I have a question for them. Grant, when, they can install the video, or they can install the audio?
I believe the cameras have audio, video built into it directly. It's a configuration option setting with inside the head end unit. You turn on that channel of audio per device.
So we do, it's just a switch, so it's not...
It's literally a checkbox.
So we need to go back and do something?
I would plug in and hit the checkbox. I mean, it's an option where you may find that if you don't have a full implementation right up front for both, you can always roll it out ala carte, or it's a response to a specific incident. You can do whatever you wish.
So are we videotaping now?
No.
Why?
Because they're not fully installed on all the buses yet.
Not because we haven't...
And we also have to address the policy, so...
Okay. I thought they came with the buses.
The hardware has, they have it configured.
It was?
The hardware came with the bus?
Yes, yes.
So when we install?
So there are still a few buses that haven't been installed into the, I guess, supply supplier issues with them actually getting the part in and of time to do the installation, so we're working that out with the manufacturers. Yeah. We're going to do what we can do all at once.
Okay.
The only other question I have is, if this, if the committee wants to approve this tonight, is the district going to have to put together a sort of like privacy policy, or sort of, this is how we use, it's considered electronic data at that point, this is how we use your data, and this is the instance in which it'll be accessed, and that sort of thing, have that policy approved and put somewhere?
We're currently in the, if I may, Chairman, we're currently in the process of reviewing file ECA, which is the security policy. We have several samples, one from North Hampton, and Grant's provided me with five, two or three of them from Rhode Island, and I think two or three are from Massachusetts. At the next program subcommittee meeting, we hope to have a draft of something which will speak to that very issue.
So that, I think, we need to go to personnel too, because it's an effect to employees. I think a videotape and pause, that's what I was going to recommend, if this got passed tonight, that personnel review of policy, because it can affect employees.
Are the bus drivers able to, the bus drivers that have consent being recorded as part of their job?
That's something that's up for negotiation or a discussion outside of this.
I expect, as a contract right now, it's just a statement they can sell to the report.
So we have a motion, and a, a second. Do we want to put a timeline attached to this motion? this motion? Well, I mean, if we pass it, I mean, conceivably, it can go into effect tomorrow. I'm saying, do we want to put a timeline on it so that we say effective?
Not sooner than?
You know, on a date, you know, December first, whatever, whatever, um, do we want to do that, and so that we have time to see if there's feedback from the community?
Um, my opinion is that we, we're going to do the installation, no matter what, the videos are already passed. Once all the installation is done and ready to go, we notify the school committee, and at that point, the school committee, uh, we can, will discuss what the, what the good starting date would be, and I'm sure that you will have feedback prior to that, based upon the notifications that we sent out as well.
So, I was just saying, I think we need, if looking for a date has to go into the motion, so my question to Grant would be, what would, what time period are we looking at for installation?
I don't actually have an honest answer for you at this time.
Like November, like we said, November first, or December first?
If you were going to have to put a date, I would go a little further out.
December first.
More time is better, but like, like I said, if at any time we have an update, we have a status that's completed, say in three weeks, we can most certainly notify you and say, we're ahead of schedule.
And then at the same time, do we want to wait till all buses are done, or can we do so before you, because they already have the equipment?
That's, I, that's an unrationable question, I mean, if they're all in, they turn them all on, I mean, that's, that's a more problematic decision, I don't know. That's beyond my, my favorite.
No, I'm just asking you.
Technically, the answer is yes, operationally, I have no.
Well, I'm going to ask you because I don't know, it seems like some buses have it already, and some.
The hardware is installed, nothing's configured.
Say that again?
The hardware may be installed, but nothing's configured, nothing's turned on and running, so.
I was.
The last conversation I had was approximately after the buses were completed. So we still have a lot of options to do. I don't know what timeline, how long it takes to actually do the installation, we're trying to get a hold of some of the staff at the transportation company and the manufacturer to get some feedback. It all depends on the supply chain, when things come in, or when they're available to complete the installation, so. There's a lot of moving parts, and I don't have an honest answer for you at this time.
I just couldn't figure out what we had.
I can't give you a straight answer, as in time, but, yeah, more is better.
It seems to me that what we should, the way we should proceed with this is that we should vote to instruct the administration to proceed with announcing to the community, uh, school community that we're going to implement audio and video recordings on the buses, um, in the future, we don't know the date. And so that, that would serve as a survey, probably serve a lot better than a survey, my experience with surveys to parents is that they, they, you don't get much of a return, but when you actually do something, you hear, you hear right away.
So maybe we pick the date of January first, so that, that way a notice is not vague, that it's been passed, um, all the necessary protocols are being put in place and tested and whatever. I don't know.
And if it doesn't happen, you know, if the equipment's not there, it's not there.
Exactly, but that way it's far enough out that Grant has some breathing room to make sure it's going to work. Um, you know, I just hate to pick a date too soon, and far enough in the future that people can get more comfortable with the idea.
But if we can do the audio, I mean, why are we waiting? Is that right? But I don't know, I just, I'm just curious, if the notice is the video, why are you waiting? Get the video started. But no, they're being video, they'll see, they'll be actually asking and saying, you know, we're going to get.
The video's going to go on as soon as it goes on, that's all I'll say. We're only talking about the audio.
Okay.
All right, you figured that out, though. You figured out how you're going to.
We're in the details.
All right, so.
So we can amend your motion to this?
Yeah, can we, I would offer amendment of, of a motion that would, to be implemented amended on January second.
Second to the amendment.
Any discussion on the amendment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, back to the as amended motion. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose.
Aye.
They pass this, two minutes ago.
I suggest.
Six minutes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, I know this is all going to be.
I can tell Katie.
You can tell.
We've been waiting all day. We've been waiting all the time.
Katie's in the supervisor's office reporting.
Thank you.
Well, once again, thank you, Mr. Chair, gracious introduction. I would like to start off first by speaking about the police department sponsoring a grade level project. We're all aware that the police inaugurated a cops and kids program last year, which meant that they, about five or six times throughout the course of the year, they visit each and every school during recess lunch, and they're getting to know the children, and they want the children to get to know them. The police have now taken this one step further, and the police officers at each school are adopting a particular grade, which means that they will be staying with that particular grade from first grade all the way up to graduation. I don't know that all the details have been laid out, but they have assigned specific police officers to be the liaisons, if you will, to particular grades. I had the opportunity to see about four or five policemen speak with grade one of East Gloucester just the other day, Miss Amelie Boz, Miss Tell's classes, and it went very, very well. It was very nice, it was applicable, the police were having a blast, the kids enjoyed asking questions, you know, how come you have a badge? Was a good question. They talked about playing some games, and one of the students said, well, we're cops robbers. I said, no. So it's, I just wanted to let you know that the police are actively engaging our students as part of their community outreach. Yesterday, item number two, we had a formalization of partnership between the Essex North Shore Agricultural and Technical School, the Construction and Crafts Labor Union Local Twenty-Two, and the Gloucester Public School District, we signed a memorandum agreement, meaning that this January, we hope to begin a pilot program whereby upwards of twenty of our grade eleven students, particularly students who are not enrolled in our vocational program, who, according to guidance, they have some knowledge, that there are some students who don't really know what their future holds for them, and they are going to be invited to participate in the vocational programs at NSAT, which means that they are, they remain Gloucester high school students, they take their core academic courses in the morning, up, say, through lunch, then we will have a bus that will take them Monday through Thursday to NSAT. They will participate in a program that involves carpentry, masonry, and landscaping. On Friday, they would stay in the building, but in both, at both the tech and at the high school, the local twenty-two will have a presence. They in fact were over to the high school last week, looking at the room that we initially were considering, moving the culinary room two, and once we get the go-ahead from the electrical inspector, they're intended to come in and make the place beautiful. They're going to come in, they're going to renovate that classroom. I should add that there has been some extensive conversation about having Essex students, North Shore students, help us, local and our own students, to refurbishing our vocational classrooms as well over the summer, so that is still a live consideration. The local is providing the instructor at NSAT, and we had a meeting about two, three weeks ago, we invited the John and Molly Burns to come in, and we spoke with them about the need to pay for the transportation, it's a thirty thousand dollar bill from January to June, and they were as spontaneous in their response as they were substantial, and they said, yes, of course. So our thanks go out to everybody who's involved, Dr. Riccio, superintendent, Kathleen Holman, who's involved in curriculum body car at the tech, who is the community partner person, Greg has been involved in the formulations, he went out to Hopington, I think he reported out to the school committee a couple of weeks back, James Cook as well, Melissa Cathy with initial meeting from the mayor has been pushing for this as well, and Representative Anne Margaret Ferranti in particular has been the driving force. The next phase is to see two things. One is to get the Department of Education in their, a little bit stuttering, but we'd like to get them to at a minimum approve this model type of program. There are others around the state, they're limited, but Lawrence and greater Lawrence Tech have such an arrangement, we have based in part our MOA on the Lawrence agreement as well. And, and of course, for next year, the hope and the expectation is that we'll be able to find some funding for this thing as well. I should mention that there are a number of people, two of which from the, from the union, from the Construction and Laborers Union, one is Michael Trump Conti, and the others, Blue Mannequin Jr., and they have been extremely persuasive and very, very helpful in their part with this partnership. What is, what is really interesting about the partnership is that ultimately, it becomes a two-year program, students can certify as to what they're capable of doing, and they will immediately be embraced by the union and brought in and offered apprenticeships in various fields as well. So this is a, not just a high school program potentially, but a program which can help our students, particularly those don't have a sense of what they want to accomplish for themselves, with a potential career and all the benefits there are.
I just wanted to make a quick comment, Russ, I want to commend Dr. Riccio from NSAT, well, I know, I know you write about two, but we got her to be a superintendent at a school not too long ago, and I just really believe that with the help of Anne Margaret, well, Anne Margaret actually brought this program, this idea to her too, that we wouldn't be here today if she wasn't superintendent, so I'm so happy that that worked out well. But I also want to commend us as a school committee, the whole, because I remember when I got on this committee twelve years ago, all the conversations about NSAT were competitive, you know, it wasn't a good relationship there, there wasn't a good bridge there. And here we are, ten years later, and we're working with them, and we're talking about them coming into our schools and helping us improve our classrooms and learn from all the goodness that's going up there, so I just feel like that bridge is finally there, and it's awesome, and can't thank all the administration enough for making this happen, and the mayor's office too, working with Anne Margaret and Bruce Star, so it's just awesome.
Just to point out to note, in case it gets renewed, I think, the, it's referred to Essex North Shore Agricultural Technical High School, it's referred to as Essex North Shore Agricultural Technical School, it's referred to as NSAT, it's referred to as NSATS, and at the end, it's signed on behalf of the Essex North Shore Agricultural Technical School District, so if it's going again, it'd be nice to see.
NSATS is Essex.
As I say, it's, the student reviews used throughout the document, one gives it three times, one gives it two times, and then it's written out the long way, it's written out three different ways, the long way, it'd be nice to see this done with the actual name of the school, the part of it.
Well, we just changed the name of the school, have it out to name the school.
And number three? Uh, the Department of Ed will be releasing two thousand and eighteen MCAS accountability data, we're going to get public tomorrow, so we will embargo from doing any presentations tonight, but we'll have a full report, it's going to be on October the tenth, at our next committee. Just an FYI, the instrumental music program is flourishing, it's, it doesn't really get much mentioned, but our exec program, we had expanded a couple of years ago, it was just at the middle school level, we extended it to the elementary level as well, and we continue to maintain a very high level of participation and enthusiasm. Fifty-eight percent of the program is funded through the operating budgets, about eighteen thousand dollars, thirteen thousand one hundred dollars is funded through the Gloucester Education Foundation, and I don't mention it, so I just wanted to speak about briefly to the school. With respect to November sixth, we have a full professional development day, and it's a little bit new, a little bit creative, and I'd like to ask our assistant superintendent to discuss and describe.
Yeah, it's primarily the elementary schools, we're doing something a little bit different this year, and we have committees that are hard at work on trying to put together, instead of a one-size-fits-all, or maybe three or four different presentations, or keynote speaker, or, you know, a large group activity, we're trying to put on sixty-four different sessions during the day, just for elementary school, with forced four blocks during the day, and sixteen courses within each block, and so we're, it's ambitious, where we have, we've done an initial interest survey, and we've narrowed down to a number of topics that, that go in under, you know, essential needs and also general academic, and we have, these are going to be led primarily by Gloucester teachers. It's an opportunity to highlight best practice and highlight teacher leadership and taking lead in professional development. It's also an attempt to respond to teachers' requests for much more individualized professional development. That's a hard thing to pull off, takes a lot of work to, to run sixty-four sessions in a day, but, you know, we'll have a couple repeats of popular ones. Already, we can tell what's on people's minds, I'll be leading a session, actually, two sessions on recertification, as teachers try to deal with the ever more complicated issues involved with the recertification. But the number one selection for, for teachers is understanding trauma and teaching students who have experienced trauma, and working with students with high anxiety. So that was, that's something that another one of our administrators, Will Kobe, with one of the teachers in this building. Anyway, I just wanted to mention that there's a lot of work going on for this, and keep you posted, and hopefully you can join us on, in November, we'll probably, we'll probably host it at Beeman, where we have enough parking and can handle enough sessions, but we may even need to use two schools. I'll also be inviting in members of the, some community organizations, KPM Museum, for example, there are a lot of resources that I think is sold out in the past, I'll have them come in, hopefully, and work with, with teachers, or even have teachers collab, so. We've contacted a lot of, Gloucester Stage Company, our social emotional learning, it should be a good date, so I'll keep you posted along with.
Thank you, sir. The next two deal with other professional developments, one which is, has just happened, and one which we anticipate happening, and that has to do with the 504 training. 504 is kind of a sister to special education and to ADA, it prohibits discrimination against people with disabilities in programs that receive federal financial assistance to set the stage for laying out the Americans with Disabilities Act. So there are three major laws that govern disabilities, the ADA, Americans with Disabilities Act, the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, which is primarily a special education law, and then the third is the 504, which is a civil rights law prohibiting discrimination on the basis of disability. And the two that are most closely aligned with education are, is the IDEA, which again is the, is the regulatory basis for special education, and 504s also provide protection, but it doesn't have to be, usually it is not, a student who has been found eligible for special education. The 504s in particular, if there is a major impairment that substantially limits one or more major life activities, a child with spinal disability, for example, possibly a child with emotional trauma, there are, you know, it could be temporary if a child has been in an accident, and they're in a sling or two due to the accident, they can temporarily place on a 504. And as such, then we, we develop 504 plan, and we're required to meet those particular accommodations. It's not necessarily required, it's not. It's not necessary or required, it's not mandatory, that a 504 plan be written up and signed the way special education need be, but it is, it is good practice when you're able to. It's also, I believe, active to say that if a 504 is implemented, and if a particular staff member does not comply with the accommodations in the 504, they can become personally responsible. So that puts some of the teeth, some of the muscle into the 504. There are a number of instances where students found not eligible for special education, you can use the basis of that testing, and it can, there's a, there's a whole form chart and such, but you can slide that right over into 504 as well. 504s are reviewed annually, whereas in special education, unless there's an interruption of services, it's usually a three-year annual review with check-ins and so on and so forth. But it is another way of protecting children, but those who are not necessarily under the auspices of special education. There was sort of a ground swell where staff members felt they needed a refresher, and it took place, what, yesterday? Today? Today, 504 was today. So that's that. Another proposal is a, is training for teachers who might be interested in something called, which we've heard about, this called mindfulness. So we've received an offer, courtesy of the Gloucester Education Foundation, to train interested staff in the practice of mindfulness. It's basically meditation and living in the moment. It's all sorts of, if you read the brochure, it's all sorts of research base for alleviating stress and anxiety, and this and that and the other. So the proposal is to run an eight-week course, one meeting per week, about 75 minutes in length, upwards of 20 or so staff members who might be interested. If they go to the original meeting, the initial meeting, and they find it's not for them, all well and good, but the hope and the expectation is for anybody who might be interested, that they would stay the course and do the eight-week, the eight sessions over the course of eight weeks. I'll probably be sending out a notice to staff to see if anybody is interested. I had canvassed the principals first at one of our last meetings. Their almost immediate reaction, if you recall, was that they think that there are a number of teachers who would be interested in this. So canter, and we'll send it out and see what happens.
We're not paying them.
No, no, it's going to be, if there's any, any cost, and that hasn't been negotiated, it would be funded by the, by GEM. No one having.
This is an offer.
Yeah, if somebody's interested, if somebody's willing to do it, it's possible. If this guy maybe would brought us, I don't know. If there is any cost associated with it, then it would be picked up by somebody else. Okay. What I don't have written down but would like to report out on is the, I'm putting a written report together on the incident that took place on the 18th, of near biblical proportions. Lynn is here as well, in case there are any particular questions. I've been interviewing folks, school members, other agencies as well. I'm not quite finished with that, but I think I can give you some information as to what took place on the 18th, where there was a tornado watch, shelter in place, there was smoke, there was lightning, evacuations of all kinds. Excuse me?
Thunder.
Thunder, yes indeed. Big booms, and flickering lights and smoke. And just everything else sizzling. So around 11:00 or so, a number of staff members received an alarm on their phones that there was a tornado warning. One of the things we want to talk to the fire department about is the fact that this really should be coming from our local emergency service people. Where they were getting this from, don't really know. The tornado watches really turned out to be.
Every phone in my office went off at the same time. Comes across the weather channel on your phone, and all of once, all the phones are going, I'm saying tornado within 20 minutes, so that's part of the plan.
Yeah, so, you know, in the interest of being safe, I believe the assistant principal notified the principal and all the students and staff who brought to the lower level of the building as the tornado warning was cleared, and they were about to be brought back to class. The school heard a very loud snap, that was the lightning piece, and clearly something had been hit. Nobody at that point knew where, and subsequently, for a while, the police, the fire department didn't know where either, and the lights began to flicker. The fire department was notified immediately. Officer Sutera, the SRO, part-time SRO, called at the request of Lynn. The fire department responded. Students were in the basement as the truck arrived. They did, the fire department did a walk through the building. At this point, there was no fire alarm coming from the building, and the firefighters found nothing visible. They investigated, they saw at that point what they considered to be no significant signs following the search. The crew on the scene could not determine whether there was a lightning strike or not at O'Malley. They, also the fire department called in the electrical and wiring inspectors. The DPW's facility manager, he has a radio in his car, so when he hears something from the fire department police, he immediately responds, and he came to the school as well. In so doing, he called in his electrical person as well as HVAC. The fire department went downstairs. The inspector and administration discussed moving students to the rink, to a better holding area. There was also a physical restraint, and a child had to be taken out by ambulance. All this was going on at the same time. The fire inspector, the captain on duty stated that the school is okay, and he gave the all clear, and the ambulance was then called for the students. As this was happening, when the fire department responded, they went not only to the school, but they went out to Reservoir Row, thinking that's where lightning had struck. Later on, they found out that it was on Cherry Street. Lieutenant Toussaint of the fire department notified the principal the building was safe, there was damage to power possibly due to a surge from that nearby lightning strike, and that the school might continue to have flickering lights. The administration was notified to ask teachers where the flickering was coming from. DPW was on the scene, they went to where the lights were flashing as well. HVAC went downstairs to check on the mechanical. The emergency generators were running, which according to DPW was a red flag. And in the boiler room, there were three systems, electricity A and C was still working, B was out. I can't give you any particulars beyond that. As I mentioned, the fire department asked to keep track of which classrooms were having issues. The principal was about to announce that staff and students couldn't return between, somewhere between 12:30 and 1 o'clock, DPW notified Lynn that the air handlers needed to be shut down. Because they were running on partial power, the motors themselves were straining, and it could have caused them to burn out as well. Conversation that took place between the fire department, DPW at that time, had to do with the mechanical equipment that needed to be. Also time, sometime, it all happened in rather rapid fashion, between 12:30 and 1:00, the fire alarm sounded, and at that point, custodians reported smoke coming from a supply closet near the cafeteria. Later on, DPW mentioned that it's something called a lightning contact, which means it's some sort of, which turns lights on or off, and that thing was probably cooked. There was discussion to move the students to the rink, and the, the fire inspector asked whether the students could go to the rink, or was asked, and he said absolutely. And that was sometime around 12:45 to 1:00, as I mentioned. DPW's electrical, and the principal at the front door, when the smoke was detected, they saw smoke, and of course, they recalled that the fire department would come up. As the evacuation to the rink was taking place, there were reports that there was smoke in the rink as well. DPW called in and wanted to know if it was just the smell of smoke or whether people saw smoke. Because it was just a smell, it could be a residual from what had been happening upstairs. People reported that they in fact saw smoke in the rink as well. It was later determined to be coming from the compressor room. So knowing now that there was smoke upstairs, knowing that there was smoke in the rink as well, the evacuation took place, it was raining and pouring as well, there was an hour or less of school remaining, and students were then evacuated to the buses until dismissal, which took place at its normal time at 2:00. The National Guard showed up around 2:15, they checked the switchgear on Cherry Street, and it was negative. They then checked the transformer between the rink and the school, and as mentioned before, two out of three phases were working, and one of the phases was not defused, switch had been blown off, and then National Grid went about the business of replacing that. Juice was back up by 5:00. DPW went to the boiler room, they threw the main switches on, they checked the air handling, lighting, the fire alarm, and the elevator, while IT was checking all the phones and all the communications. The following morning, we had a meeting in the mayor's office, and three of us were there. What seemed to come out of the conversation was the issue of incident command and chain of command, that who's in charge and when, when something goes wrong. There was, I think consensus, and tell me if I'm wrong, but there was consensus around the table in the mayor's office, that the line of communication needs to be strengthened. And then we have an incident commander in the building, that if the fire department's called, then they have to have an incident commander. There are advisors who say, we got this, we got that, and so on, it's got to be consolidated, and then the incident commander has to make a determination, and then this administration, of course, is going to respond based upon what emergency services says is the proper course of action at that time.
So everybody do some retraining to, to those issues.
Again, same with the channel.
Oh, you were the main.
Yes. Actually, you know what, it was a lesson, it was very good, because now we know that, you know what, she, and I complimented her because we have a new principal going into a school, and you're getting these alerts, and what do you do? And she did the right thing. And then some of the things that, only in Gloucester, things that happened, one thing after another. But we did meet, we had the police, fire, incident command, we have a protocol, what we need to do and what's going to happen, and especially on what kind of radio, and coming out of it too, you'd be happy to know, is what happens when there is no contact? We're looking into a cost of like a walkie-talkie. So we'll be able to know it at all times, because sometimes if you're a plunk hole or whatever, the radios or the cell phones aren't working, so we looked into that, so we wanted to be there. If they're underneath, you're not going to get a cellphone, so you'll have that. So each principal at each school, we're looking at the price, and John Caffey's looking at that. We're looking at also the same thing, because the DPW gets different weather reports than some of us. So we're all, we're all in awareness of who's going to do what, what needs to do. If it's fire, the fire, if it's police, it's police, whatever command, so I think that was pretty good.
Two questions. Who, and you may not know this, but who has the authority to order an evacuation of a school? I would assume a fire department, a command, and a police department, and of course, principals and superintendents, but is there any other department in the city that can order an evacuation?
According to Joe Lucino, the building inspector does have the authority to do this. That did not take place during this event, did not take place.
So I'm just asking, who does? I had a lot of parents asking me questions about this, so one of the reasons why I'm asking. And my second, so those are the three agencies that Ken, and you're working on something.
Yeah, well, the building inspector, I mean, like we said, I mean, he was talking to the assistant who was talking to the principal, saying, no, we should evacuate. I mean, it's the whole thing, it's like not send everyone home, evacuate. They did, they went to the rink, from the rink, then another thing happened, so we have it all. I mean, if we have to call, like you said, if there was a fire, they would call the building inspector, is it working, is it not working? The building inspector, by all means, has every right, 100% to say, everyone has to leave. But he has to go to the principal, saying, everyone has to leave. He just can't say everyone has to leave. So there is, there is protocol which is going to be handled, and like I said, I was very happy. I mean, I know some people were saying, but some of the parents I talked to said, that's never happened. Even when I, I mean, when I, we had never said tornado where we wanted to. I mean, and that was great, that was the first time that I've ever heard it, and I was so impressed. I said, that's great, and then all of a sudden, something else come in, and they all thought it was, everyone went to Reservoir Row, they said the tower dropped, you know, it was a lightning bolt, and it was, you know, in the school. I think in all, you know, in all fairness and everything, from a new, you have a new assistant chief, a deputy, whatever you want to call assistant chief of the fire department, new incident command, new principal, nobody else, we did damn good job. One thing right after another, boom, 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 yes, get back, no, we got to go, come on, just like three things.
My second question is, because it involves this conversation and up in the safety program too, the action protocol, does, and you may know this, you may, I don't know, do the police and fire and building inspector all have copies and blueprints of the building to know what the inside of the building looks like with classrooms out, what classroom numbers are? In other words, call goes out, room 102 at the high school, there's an incident, can they're in access to these departments to know exactly that isn't the building?
DPW has, yes.
Do the police and fire?
DPW has everything.
DPW has everything, so they can get.
And all, yes, DPW has it, we have it, the police have it, yes.
And the last thing I want to do is commend the principal, because everyone's talking how wonderful you can be in the tornado warning, and getting them off the second floor, and they're like, who does that? And like, who has tornadoes to know that in Gloucester? But I heard there's just so much good feedback from you on how you handle that, so thank you. Thank you for doing this question.
So based on Dr. Staffire and how the mayor's characterization, they did a damn good job. I wanted to respond to the email sent by Bill Sanborn buildings with the two Dr. Staffire, saying that around 12:00 on that day, he responded, along with the industrial inspector, they were at the footprint line, pictures of generators operation, generator was operated at faulty power, and the building, JD found a national grid, and informed them. At this point, Adam, Dave, Guard, Fire, Director, Joe Lucino, JD, Curly, myself, and the principal, that due to the unknown problem with electricity powering the building, we declared it unsafe and dangerous, and should vacate when National Grid solved the problem. We love to say that their advice was not taken, that they all went after the annex before smoke was reported. And so I just think, you know, they did a damn good job, we did.
First of all, when I got that email from you, I sent out an email to everyone and demanded, everyone come in my office and their staff. And someone said, well, you're calling, I don't give two sweets, everyone in my office, and they all came, and we all talked, and what he wrote, and what he said, and what we all recollected, and all the people in there, it was miscommunication, which will never happen again. But he didn't say, send the children home, evacuate. So they went from the rink to the school to the rink, so there was three different things. So from that, it was a good job. It was, because that what you sent us, I was so furious, I didn't care who the hell it was, it's not in my school. I demanded everyone come in my office, we settled it, we did it, I think they did do a damn good job. Because you went from tornado to fire. Bill Sanborn went in that office. I'm not going to argue with you, we addressed the problem. He came into my office, and what he said and what he wrote are two different, we're ending this subject.
So again, if I find the situation, quote, in total disregard of the safety of children.
Wait, is he doing public records requests? You press, like, you have an email to Dr. Staffire to bring up to a meeting, that didn't even give him a warning card.
It's not there for anybody.
Well, it doesn't matter, we, so you even did a public records request on this.
No.
Get that out of the way.
It doesn't even matter, it doesn't matter, he has a concern, absolutely, any of us have a concern, absolutely, every mother, every parent. I haven't, went on my watch. No, I am defending the superintendent, I am defending her.
No, I'm asking, why is, why is he getting messages from the city as a Gloucester?
Well, yeah, no, we have a lot of our places. I don't mind. I can hear what's going on, you're not going to, you're not going to sit there and insult. My staff, superintendent in the house, I'm telling you right now.
I'm reading words, I was.
I'm reading words with someone else, and you're interpreting it wrong, and I'm going to end this subject. I read it, you're interpreting, he didn't say dismiss the school. We evacuated within the building, we had the school buses ready, ready to go. And then they came to my office, and I asked him, did you go directly to the principal and tell her she had evacuated? And I told this one, I told this one, I told this one. So there, miscommunication, we fixed it, end this subject. Thank you.
Amen.
It's too bad you're so important and went off.
All right. Enough, change it, done.
Move on to our DNF report, and there are two action items coming out of DNF.
And I wasn't there?
Oh, you weren't there, so.
But I was.
Yeah.
And you, Melissa. Okay, so coming out of building finance, two things, two, things too long, items of significance were, we reviewed cash handling procedures, and we noticed.
And we noticed that, well, we suggested and it was agreed that we need a policy for cash, a cash handling policy within the school committee to kind of update our policy because it was pretty non-existent. There was one, I think, as a sentence. So we, I assume this is referred to BNF, file a DM to review that policy. Tell me.
Okay.
Okay. And we also need a cash handling procedures for sports and gateways. Okay? The other item that does have, let's see, that, another item that has action is the, there was a safety service report from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, basically saying the floors in all of our shops need to be replaced or fixed. So do you wanna say anything?
Sure.
Be antipathetic. The electricity shop, I examined the floor and the, it has a wood floor. The wood floor, water has dripped on the wood floor and has buckled. So it's a tripped hazard. So that really needs to be replaced. The carpentry shop, there's, it has wood floor and then tile on top of the wood floor. The tile is missing in a lot of spaces. So we need to, we need to fix the floor because it's uneven. So that needs to be replaced. The auto shop floor has been repaired. There's been holes in the cement. They put news, they filled up the holes with cement, smoothed it out, and fixed the floor tile in the auto shop restroom, and that's been fixed. So that is, has been repaired. Now, the other two shops, the, have cement floors, the cabinet making and the machine tool technology shops. We need to contact the Department of Ed and get some more information of exactly what they're talking about because it looks fine. But we wanna understand where they're saying it's defective. So more information is needed on that.
This came out because of, it was in an open ticket that, and when you talked to DPW, they said it was gonna be very expensive and they didn't have the money to do it. Which is why the action item that came out of this is a request to the city council to inform them that we have this expense of.
Large ticket.
Large ticket item.
It also was listed in the CPM, was my understanding.
Right. This is the compliance report from the Department of Ed, the CPTE compliance report.
Safety. Safety survey.
Safety survey.
Shall I make a comment?
Sure.
The building finding in the subcommittee recommends the whole school committee to authorize a superintendent to send a letter to the city council requesting funds to address flooring issues in the vocational shops. Second.
Is there any discussion?
They don't have any funding source. We're just notifying.
We're just notifying that.
Yeah, not requesting the funds. So they don't have a funding source.
Well.
It's just that we're fulfilling the ordinance.
We're fulfilling, we're fulfilling the ordinance to communicate to the city council that this needs.
That this needs to be done.
Yes.
And it puts on notice that we recognize and that there's an injury and we can say we.
Because it's a safety issue, because of compliance and with regulators, is this something that the school committee can ask for free cash? Once we get a.
But that's not part of that process.
The ordinance calls for notification to the city council, but as a follow-up to that, I'm asking whether or not the school committee would consider making a reformal request for free cash when, if and when it's available so that we can be safety standards in our vocational shops.
Right, because then we find that with a solution.
Depending on their true limitations.
Yes.
Yes.
But the first one is, is it just a form of, it's just a formality. The second one is.
So, but what's before us now is just to authorize you to send a letter to the city council and inform them of the situation. And free cash, I haven't heard any timeline on, but I believe they just, they just sent in. Is it heavily certified yet?
No.
It's down to.
Good issues?
Yeah, good issues. Okay. So is there any further discussion on the authorization of the way to the city council? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Present. Okay. Six in favor and one present.
Okay. And the other item of note was a request for more time for preschool nurse and maybe you could give us.
Yes, I was approached by the director of nurses. Currently, Monday through Thursday, from 1:30 to 2:30 in preschool, we don't have any coverage. She provided me with some data from last year where there were 86 or 84 visits during the 1:30 to 2:30 timeframe. And almost 40 of those were due to some form of illness. This year, there was an asthma situation. And, you know, if the nurse is not there, that's problematic. There's EpiPen issues and so on and so forth. So I guess the reality is, is that it is a potential liability to not have a nurse to cover the full session for preschool Monday through Thursday. This, this request is to increase the preschool nurses' hours by one hour per day, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. This particular nurse, well, let's just say in a particular arrangement, health insurance would not be an issue. So the total cost was, was it $5?
Yeah, $5,931.
$6,000.
And that money would come from the preschool of the district?
They have a preschool revolving fund. There could be tax for that.
Cool.
So is the position now, I know this should go nurse, sounds like it does not require insurance. The position now is under the threshold and this hour should go over the threshold? Is that?
Yes. So there's potential liability down there.
But it's a requirement or it's a liability on that part of the district if we don't have a nurse?
That's, that's mine, yes.
100-plus kids are in there, right?
And growing. Okay, so I'll make a motion to increase the preschool nurses' hours by one hour per day Mondays through, Monday through Thursdays. And I say.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Ooh. It's unanimous. Is there anything else? Do you have enough?
No, everything else seems to be on track from our district expenditures.
So we have two grants from GEF. And the first one is a $38,373 grant for physics, technology, and next generation science. And we look at the, um, Gloucester High School. Is there any further information on this?
We have it in. Share a little bit of that. And so this is a grant that was proposed by the science program leader, Carol Capasso, proposed to us and to GEF to really upgrade the physics program by using vernier probes and new curriculum, master physics curriculum, as well as an online homework and additional resource management system. The combination of those three, and this is a six-year, which is the standard when you purchase textbook, you also get six years worth of online support. So it's a full package of management and curriculum and online system, management system for physics.
So that's, this is basically buying textbooks and.
Textbooks, probes, equipment.
Equipment.
Yeah.
Sure.
And sister, this is, this was, this class of this generator within the school saying, hey, we'd like to do this. And GEF will step in and assist.
Yeah, the way the process typically goes with GEF is they have a pretty nice partnership, especially with Tina Ramo. And so we propose sometimes, teachers propose frequently. And the requests come to, to me and to Dr. Sapphire. We take a look at them. We have a monthly meeting, which you know. And this is one that Carol Capasso proposed. And I believe she knew based on, just a look at the budget the last few years, that a $38,000 request might not fly when she freshed it out. And we're thrilled that they were able to support. It's a very generous show of support for the physics program.
Okay, a motion?
I know that we accepted a grant from Gloucester Education Foundation, the amount of $38,373 for the Gloucester High School Physics Technology and Next Generation Science.
Second.
Okay, is there any further discussion?
I just, you know, certainly I thank GEF for sending along that, just to know, like I raised an eyebrow that we as a district have to rely on the kindness of others to stuff we, you know, obviate or tie ourselves. Don't be, don't be.
Anything else? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Ooh. It's unanimous. Do we need a motion to reconsider this?
No, the committee.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. The second grant is from Gloucester Education Foundation. They are $15,050. And I'm a little confused on this because there's a list of what it'll be used for and it adds up to much more than $15,050. So before we start, can we get some clarification on whether this is a payment towards all of these things? And there's more payments coming or what that, what that really means?
What makes it about $50?
Yes.
Or is it a misprint?
I would say that is a misprint. But the letter that we have from Gloucester Foundation notes $13,100 for after school music, $3,500 for ballroom dance, and $5,000 for seeking relief. So shall we, should we be looking at more?
So that.
Twenty-one and six.
But we also have elementary teacher.
Yeah, we've got.
Calcutta kindergarten.
We have a lot of stuff on.
The first paragraph on the bullet shift, $5,000, $6,550, and $5,500 plus $3,500 gets you to $15,050. So the three things talked about in the first paragraph of the bullets adds to the figure they sent.
Oh.
Yeah, restricting funding for the rest.
Oh, that's right, the delay.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the other part is basically saying that board has agreed to the funding, but it's not issued the check right now. It is not issued the check.
Okay. Okay. I get it. So this is a partial payment to these things. And it's for the amount of $15,050. Is there a motion? So.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay. It's opposed, it's yes. And that brings us to MSBA. We got a letter today, the RFS closed today for designer. We got a letter today, I got an email from Donna today that said that they'd only received two proposals. Now, the information we had beforehand was that if they didn't get three or more, that MSBA may ask us to re-advertise. There was something, some indication from our OPM that, that they maybe, they were going to appeal that and try to move forward.
I'm sure there's a, the OPM should wait out there. Basically, it just kind of proving it took the right steps, it sounds like. And then you wish to re-advertise.
Well, I'm just saying that earlier, earlier we were only gonna advertise for two weeks. And that's when this issue of getting at least three came up because we got communications from MSBA directly to us, asking us to advertise it for longer because they had their experience, their recent experience was they weren't getting a lot of responses to RFSs. And they thought we should advertise longer. And then they said to us, and if you don't get three, we're gonna ask you to re-advertise. So the OPM is saying that that's not exactly right. So this all happened today, so I just, I don't have any more answers to that. If, if, if that's, if we are able to go forward, the building committee will review the responses. They'll, they'll, they'll cite this if, if necessary. But one of the responses is Dorn Witty is one of those that was parried. And on the 16th, there'll be, there'll be a building committee meeting next week at which we'll discuss the responses. On the 16th, the, the MSBA's design review committee will meet and there'll be three representatives from our building committee, which will be, and this is, MSBA basically says who they're gonna be. It'll be John, Donna, and the superintendent and myself to carry the message of whatever the building committee wants. So we, we, we don't know. Well, we should find out this week exactly whether we, if we have to go back out to re-advertise, it'll be another three weeks. I don't know what that does to, to the, the MSBA's design review committee only meets every six weeks. So that's about it on the MSBA. I was approached by the council president, Paul Lundberg, saying that it's in the chart that we're supposed to have joint meetings. And he suggested that we have a joint meeting with school committee and the city council at the end of October. We tentatively set the date of the 30th, which is a Tuesday night. It's the last week. It's the last week, and there's no school committee meetings, or city council meetings scheduled.
Agenda.
And so the September, October, there you go. So the question is, why would you want to put on the agenda? And his suggestion was, he would like, because of the recent approval of the zoning for marijuana, he wanted to hear what the schools are doing to educate students regarding.
Now, he wants to hear our opinion on marijuana.
No, he wants to hear. How are we gonna deal with it? He doesn't see where our opinion is.
We're gonna have the funding.
And, and I suggested that we needed to talk about the facilities review that the city council has just approved.
Or the payment of.
We're gonna be at O'Neely on the 30th, 7 o'clock. And I'd be open to, I'd be looking for agenda items. The agenda's not set, it won't be set for a while, but those are the only two things that have come out so far. Anything else?
Yes. I posted it on Facebook, so you know. Posted it in the other group, posted in my May's page. Seventy-two comments, for, against. The rest absolutely should have done a long time ago, video and audio.
That's how the comments, everyone, you share, is what I'm.
No, and plus the shares and everything else is, and then they answered, and one was just concerned, what happens if somebody gets in trouble, criminal, if criminal, you know, we know about seal children's cards, like that, 'cause she was walking by, she answered it. And all, and I agree, so that negative went to a positive, so we're getting it.
Anything else?
I do.
All right.
Want to do a adjournment?
I just want to refer to personnel policy on the video and the audio, to go into the employee's handbook, so that we know procedure and process. Get that copy while we're getting feedback, too, so that it can all come out at the same time.
Anything else? We have a motion to adjourn in a second. Do we have a vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.